Hi, I'm Don Moore, moderator of the forum of the Democratic candidates for the District Three Council race. Here with us are Gulad Kassim, Sidney Katz, Tom Moore, and Ryan Spiegel. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters and hosted by Montgomery Community Media. League of Women Voters of Montgomery County, of course. Lena Barnes, the president of the league, is here today to serve as timekeeper. I want to thank everyone here at Channel 21 and the league for all the hard work that went into coordinating this forum. I also want to thank the candidates for sharing their time with us. Participating in forums like this is important to give voters the information they need to make informed choices at the polls. We plan on having a lively exchange of ideas today with the candidates, who will give opening statements, followed by questions where I might also ask a follow-up question, and then each will have an opportunity to provide a closing statement. The questions today were prepared by the league. The candidates are seated in alphabetical order. The order of the opening and closing statements was determined by a random drawing prior to the taping. With that said, let's go ahead and start the forum. And I believe in our opening, Mr. Katz, you've got the first up.
Well, thank you very much, Don, and thank you for the hosts for doing this for all of us, and we sincerely appreciate the audience for watching. My name is Sidney Katz. I'm the current mayor of Gaithersburg, and I am running for the District Three County Council seat. I grew up in Montgomery County. I was born here. As a background, for my background, I was elected 36 years ago in the city of Gaithersburg. 20 years ago, I was on the city council for 20 years, and I've been the mayor for the last 16. During that time, I also owned a small business for 43 years, which was actually started by my grandparents in 1918. It was called Wolfson's, and I closed that business about six or seven months ago. I've always had the commitment to be on the county council, and as you can see, I've had a commitment to serve my community. But now I actually have the time, and that's why I've gotten to decide to run for this office. My wife Sally is a pupil personnel worker for Montgomery County Public Schools. She, before that, was a speech-language pathologist for them as well. We have two daughters. My oldest daughter works for Montgomery County Public Schools at Churchill High School. She's the administrative secretary there, and our youngest works for GEICO. I grew up in Montgomery County. I have two older brothers, one is an attorney and one is a retired lieutenant with the state police. And my family has certainly been one that is very law-abiding. And in fact, my mother used to always say that all three of her sons got on different sides of the law, and thank goodness they're all legal. My campaign is certainly one that is driven by the people. I've gotten many endorsements from various people. I'm very proud of the fact that I've gotten an endorsement from Senator Ben Cardin, Lieutenant Governor Anthony Brown, Senator Jenny Forhan, Senator Leonard Tidobom, Delegate Ben Kramer, former mayor Phyllis Marcucci, and the list goes on and on. I've gotten several organizations as well that have endorsed me, and I see that my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Spiegel?
Thank you. My name is Ryan Spiegel, and I am a Democratic candidate for county council in District Three, and I want to start out by echoing thanks to the League of Women Voters and to Montgomery Community Media for hosting this forum. For the better part of the last decade, I have been municipal legislator, a city council member in Gaithersburg, and I've cast hundreds of votes on a wide range of important issues to our community. And I'm proud to be a progressive leader on issues like affordable housing, campaign finance reform, economic development, supporting educational programs for our youth, and financial literacy to assist our seniors and our families with financial independence and financial stability. I founded the Bank on Gaithersburg program, and I want to grow that program countywide to continue that financial literacy initiative that not only helps lift up members of our community, but is also good for our local economy. I'm proud to be endorsed by a broad and deep group of members of our community, including organizations that represent teachers, police, firefighters, women's groups, working families, business leaders. I'm also endorsed by the Gazette, and I think that that's a reflection of the style and the leadership that I've provided over the last several years as a city council member. Prior to being on the city council, I served as chairman of the county's commission on victims of crime, fighting to make sure that people who are vulnerable get the services they need to support their recovery and support their success as members of our community. I'll bring that same passion and experience to the county council in District Three. Again, my name is Ryan Spiegel. You can visit my website to learn more, www.rionspiegel.com, and I ask for your vote on June 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Mr. Kassim?
Thank you, Don, and I want to start off and echo what has been said and thank the organizers, the league, Montgomery media, for really putting this together. It's really important for the residents and the citizens of Montgomery County, particularly in District Three, to be able to get a shot at looking at all the candidates. Now, we have three other opponents here who have a history of public service, and I think all of us have had different roads in getting here. I myself came here as an immigrant when I was 10 in 1985. My family had fled. Our home country came here, and I decided I started my public service at the age of 18, after becoming a citizen just two months after gaining citizenship, and signed up for the United States Marine Corps, enlisted, because this country had given so much to me and my family. And since then, I've been active in various programs, helping the homeless, helping folks in need, tutoring programs for young kids. And throughout this whole time, you know, volunteering for the Democratic Party, registering voters, because the idea is, at the end of the day, it has to be bottom-up. We live in a very diverse community, and that diversity is our strength. We all want education that prepares our kids for the 21st century. We want an environment that's free and clear of pollution, so that our seniors and our children have a clean place to live and play. We want a fair working environment that supports all workers, and at the end of the day, we want development that is forward-looking and that looks at the potential growth that's coming, and also looks at the needed infrastructure. My name is Gulad Kassim. I look forward to answering all your questions, Don, and I look for the voters to look for my name on June 24, and I need your vote, and I ask you for your support.
Mr. Kassim, thank you. Mr. Moore, you have the cleanup slot for these opening statements.
Thank you, Don, and thank you to the league. Well, my name is Tom Moore, and I serve on the Rockville City Council, and I seek to represent you on the Montgomery County Council. I'm pleased and honored that the Maryland Sierra Club, Progressive Neighbors, and our county's volunteer firefighters have all endorsed my campaign. I grew up in Montgomery County. My mom is a retired Montgomery County public school teacher, and my dad is 45 years into his career at NIH. I live in Rockville now with my lovely wife Amy and our six unruly kids, all six of whom go to Montgomery County Public Schools. No one in this race is more invested in the success of our schools than I am. During my service in the Rockville City Council, I've invested in our infrastructure, I've protected affordable housing, and I've kept our property tax rates steady. When I was deciding whether to run, I took a look at the tools that are in the county council's toolbox. I refuse to pretend that I'm running for the Board of Education. The county council simply doesn't control the nitty-gritty of the schools, just like we don't have any work to do on global warming. But what we can do is focus on reversing the increasing income inequality that we're seeing in Montgomery County. We're seeing the effects of this income inequality all over the place, maybe most prominently in the achievement gap that we're seeing in the schools. Everyone agrees that we're not getting enough money from Annapolis to keep up with the growth of our school population. But funding our schools isn't even half the battle. The income, the achievement gap, isn't being created by our schools, it's being measured by our schools. Income inequality is what is creating that gap, and fixing that gap means fixing that inequality. We need to work on our families, make sure that they have time to spend their children and they're not traveling all the county and working jobs that barely make ends meet. We can do that by investing in infrastructure, and we can do that by moving smart growth close to that infrastructure. That's how we can actually change our families and bring this county to a better place, so all of our families can succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, the first question goes to Mr. Moore, and that is this. And once again, gentlemen, you'll have each a chance to respond to this question as well. First question's on business climate. There's much talk that Maryland has a bad business climate. What specific actions can the Montgomery County Council take to make Montgomery County a better place to bring a business?
It's not just a perception that Montgomery County isn't particularly friendly to business. It's not that it's particularly unfriendly, it's just that the procedures that need to be in place to make it a good place to start businesses are not working. It's too bureaucratic. The people who are working for the county are good people, they're doing a good job, but they're working with systems that are broken, and they need to be fixed. That's something that I'm doing in Rockville. We are about to, in the next month or so, announce a big streamlining of our processes, and it's what we need to do in the county. The one thing that the county needs to keep in mind, that it doesn't now, is the time value of money. We need to make decisions more quickly. We need to keep all of our goals in mind, our social goals, our environmental goals, but we have to do them faster. For businesses, time is money, and that's the one thing that the county council can absolutely do.
Okay. Mr. Kassim?
Well, I think perception has something to do with it. You know, when you start repeating things over and over and again, it starts to set in. This is a business-friendly economy, this is a business-friendly climate, and we could do a much better job. We need to be forward-looking at the niche that we have here in Montgomery County. We have the biohealth quarter, the biotech quarter here in up to 270, and I think that's something that we need to improve in terms of sort of, you know, a few weeks ago, about a month ago, the county closed up a biohealth incubator. And those kinds of steps are exactly the wrong steps that we need to take that are creating this perception. We need to be conscious of that perception, because it is very important. But in terms of businesses, we are a business-friendly climate because we are the economic engine of the state.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Spiegel?
Well, I think there's a misconception that economic development is separate and apart from the other priorities that we have as a county, when the reality is, the future of our economic success is directly tied to the future of our success in providing services to the most vulnerable. The stronger our economy, the more tax revenue we'll have to provide those important services. The economy has to work for everyone. What I'd like to do is bring the successful ideas that we implemented in the city of Gaithersburg to a county-wide level. That includes creating an economic incentive toolbox program. It includes creating an economic opportunities grant, and it includes making sure that we provide the resources for smaller businesses, because I think we focus often too much on large businesses to the detriment of the smaller businesses out there that are important to creating jobs. I've done that on the city council in Gaithersburg, and I'll bring those exact same ideas to the county and grow our small and large businesses.
Mr. Katz?
Thank you, and Ryan has already mentioned the programs that we have had in the city of Gaithersburg, and of course, we've done those for many, many years, and I'm very proud that I was a part of those as well. I think really what we have to do is take the idea that, the idea of the perception becomes reality, and in many cases, this is perception, but if someone believes that we do not have a business-friendly climate, then we need to show them that we do and to prove to them that we do. And we certainly do that by showing that we deal with businesses of all sizes. I was very proud of the fact that I was in Gaithersburg and was part of bringing Metamune to Gaithersburg. I believe that we need to have a project manager for various businesses, that when they want to grow here, that they can call someone and there's a person, so that we can make government a more humanistic government. We have to make certain that our infrastructure is there, and that's from the roads to the information highway. And I also believe that we need to keep in mind that we all must work together to make certain that businesses remain here.
Okay. Thank you. Our second question deals with the energy tax, and it's a very direct question, so please don't feel like you have to use the whole minute if you don't want to. It can be, you know, just even one word or two. And first up is Mr. Kassim. The current county council just decreased the energy tax. Would you support continuing decreasing or eliminating this tax? How would you make up the lost revenue?
Well, when the energy tax was put on, the county promised that it would be drawn back to, I think, 2010 levels. So right out of the gate, yes, my answer is I would support decreasing the energy tax. In terms of revenue, and it goes back to the economic development question that was said earlier, we need to improve our economic sort of portfolio here in Montgomery County. We need to diversify in terms of the businesses that we are supporting. We're going after this new cybersecurity business and so forth. We need to take umbrage in that things such as congestion relief, things as in improving our bus routes for people or employees, all these things support the revenue stream in Montgomery County, so we can't be thinking that it's one or the other. But in terms of the energy tax, I support taking it back to where it was.
Mr. Katz?
When the energy tax was first put in, I believe there was a sunset when the energy tax, and I believe that we should have to live by what we say we're going to do. Obviously, government needs money in order to function, but if we said we were going to sunset something, then I think we need to live by our promises. You can get additional revenues through economic development, and I'm someone who's been involved with the city of Gaithersburg for all these years. We have only raised their tax rate once in 45 years, and we're still, even when we raised their tax rate, we are still the lowest tax rate for municipalities in this region. I also believe that what we can do for the energy tax itself is that if it is no longer something that we need to continue, then we need to make certain that the other taxes that we have are at a fair and reasonable rate, so that people can afford to continue to live here if they're retired.
Mr. Moore?
We either need to roll that revenue into our property tax rates, or we need to cut spending. That is the only honest way to do it. When I've spoken to business and residences in this county, they hate being nickel-and-dime. They hate looking at their tax bill and not being able to understand it and having 16 line items on it. Clear and understandable rates will make for happier residents, happier businesses. It's the way to go. But we should also look at cutting spending. If we don't need that revenue, we should do without that revenue.
Spiegel?
I'll echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been made here. I agree that when the county made a promise to sunset, they should have kept that promise, and I would support the full sunset of the energy tax, which has become a burden not only to businesses, but in many cases, a very large burden to residents who are struggling at the lower levels of income or at the middle levels of income, and they deserve the relief that they've been promised. I do not support increasing other tax rates at this time. I do think growing the economic base through economic development programs, growing the revenue base, and smart budgeting is the way to go.
Thank you. Let me do this as a follow-up to that, and the energy tax is about cutting tax, and as Mr. Moore said, about revenue and going somewhere. Give me one area in the current county budget that you would cut, one area that you believe we would need to add revenue to. And for this follow-up, you've got 30 seconds, and let's start with Mr. Katz.
Well, the one area that would need to be cut, I think we need to look at many more than just one area. I think it's very difficult to say that there's just one thing that we need to look at. I know that in our economic development department, for instance, we need to make certain that they are being as efficient and as effective as they possibly can be. As far as something that I would add to the budget, public safety is something that is in everyone's mind. I believe we should add school resource officers to our schools, to every school and perhaps every middle school in Montgomery County should have a school resource officer.
Mr. Moore, we're now going to move to 40 seconds for this response. Sorry. No, it gets 40 seconds.
In some ways, that's a matter of cuts. I think we do need to slow increases in employee compensation. There have been some very generous increases in the last couple of years. I'm not sure that's a level that the county can afford. That is something I hear a lot of people concerned about. Extra revenue can definitely be used to restore the cuts in the libraries that have been made over the last couple of years. I learned to read basically Davis Library, and one of the things I'm most proud of is getting the, leading the community effort to get the Rockville library built on time. It's absolutely an important community service that everyone in our community can use.
Mr. Spiegel, one cut, one add.
Well, one cut I think we can look at is where there is duplication of services between our departments of permitting and park and planning. And I think that if we can make that process more efficient, we will find places to cut to make sure that we benefit the local economy by having a more efficient system. In terms of adding, I think we need to add funding for school construction. So many of our schools are just bursting at the seams, and we need to make sure that we increase funding for that. I'd like to also see us increase some funding for economic development, but we need to spend that money wisely and not just give it away as handouts.
Okay. Mr. Kassim?
I think if I can do two things that I'd like to cut, if you will, and I think one would be, essentially, as Tom said, there has been sort of an increase in employee pay, and I think I'd like to see a decrease in that trajectory. In terms of increase, I think school construction is huge. Also, with bus ridership, we are trying to essentially say we want to be a mass transit community, and cutting bus routes right on is actually the opposite direction, so I'd improve on that.
Okay. Thank you. Our next topic is one that's near and dear to the hearts of District Three, the district, as they call it, the district of the municipalities. So this deals with municipalities. And first up is Mr. Spiegel. How would you change the relationships between the municipalities in Montgomery County and the county government?
I really appreciate that question, because I believe that a county council member's job is not just to be somebody who shows up and casts a vote yea or nay for county legislation. It's to be an ambassador, it's to be an advocate, and it's to be a consensus builder, and that's the approach I've taken as a municipal leader, and it's the approach I'll take as a county leader. When you represent District Three, there is a good chunk of District Three that's not in municipalities, and those folks need to get their services and get their representation as well. But there is a good chunk that is located in municipalities. And coming from municipal government, having extensive experience as a city legislator, I understand the issues that municipalities deal with, and I'm going to work very closely with the city council members and the mayors in Rockville and Gaithersburg to advance their agendas, and that includes dealing with tax duplication. Right now, municipal residents basically are double taxed for services that are supposed to be provided by the county but end up being provided by the cities, and we really need to right that, correct that problem.
Mr. Kassim?
I think the one thing that I would bring that would be slightly different is the fact that I have not been in office, in municipal office. And I'd be reaching out to folks both in Rockville, Derwood, Aspen Hill, and Gaithersburg equally. I think one thing that I've found is going door-to-door, talking to voters, is the level of disconnect people have with what happens in Rockville. That is directly seen when you see on Election Day the dramatic drop-off in voter turnout. People are disconnected from the system because they have lost some faith in the process, and I'll be one that goes back and tries to reinvigorate some of that faith in the process. And I'll be reaching out to communities, going almost door-to-door in the four-year cycle, asking people what they can be doing, asking them for their opinion, asking for community input in terms of development, in terms of community management.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
Well, thank you, and I too appreciate the question. I actually am a past president of the Maryland Municipal League, state president, as well as I was county president of the Montgomery County chapter for at least four years, maybe even longer than that. But I have seen firsthand, have worked firsthand with the county on this concern, and over time, we have had some things that have been gotten better and some things that have not gotten there yet. And Ryan did point on tax, point out about tax duplication. That's something that's been worked on for many, many years. The energy tax, which was brought up earlier, the fact that Montgomery County gets an energy tax and they charge the city of Gaithersburg and the city of Rockville for that energy tax as well, I think is, we're putting in the streetlights and we have to pay them to do it. But I also believe it's very necessary to remind everyone that each of us that will represent everyone, whether they are in District Three, whether they are in a municipality or not, and I would have mentioned many times that I am, as a mayor, I certainly am someone that likes to solve problems, and I'd like to solve all the problems for people who are in municipalities as well as those who are not.
Mr. Moore?
I think the most important thing we can do is actually put somebody on the county council who has experience running a municipality. We haven't had somebody with serious experience running a major city in this county in 16 years. Rockville has not had anybody on the county council in 16 years, so I think it's an important first step. What we would bring, and what I would bring, running the most central and complicated city government in the county, is a good sense of how to build a budget and how to defend a budget, how to go up when there's opposition to something and do what's right for the entire community. That's what a sitting municipal official can bring, that's what I can bring.
Thank you. Well, let's turn now to a topic that directly impact and indirectly impact voters and residents of District Three, and that's the federal transit projects. Maryland is seeking federal financing, federal funding for three transportation projects, two of which are in Montgomery County. It doesn't seem, according to the press, that all of these projects will be funded. What are the benefits of each project, and which would you support if funding was available only for one in Montgomery County? And we want a one, is really, we want, elections are about choices, being an elected official is about choices. And so your choice is one, and we start off with Mr. Moore.
I believe the two projects you're referring to are the Purple Line, which is down in Bethesda, Silver Spring, and the CCT, the Carter City Transit Way. Although the CCT is very important to our area of the county, and I think it is a vital project, if you had to choose between them, I think you would actually have to choose the Purple Line. It is, we have had, this, Montgomery County has suffered for decades not having good east-west transit, and that is as high a priority as the CCT, as I think Purple Line would actually be higher.
Okay. Mr. Spiegel?
I respectfully disagree. I would choose the CCT, I think for a number of reasons, not merely the fact that it is the one project that will best serve the residents and businesses of District Three, also because the cost-benefit ratio is best with this project. It costs the least amount of money of the three projects to be able to provide the largest economic benefit and ridership benefits when you look at the ratios. So I think when we're looking at limited resources and we're looking at trying to have the most bang for our buck, this is the project that we need to pursue, the CCT. I do support the other projects, but I think this is the one that I would pick as my number-one priority.
Mr. Kassim?
Well, I echo Ryan. While I support all three projects, I think the CCT would be the one that I would vote for. And primarily, you know, when we're talking about congestion relief in this area, we're really talking about a north-south transit. And if you get on 270 or you get on 355, you do see that huge congestion. In our district, park and planning has it that by 2040, we're going to have another 73,000 people living in our district. So if the current arteries are not really holding up for the 200-plus thousand people, imagine we put another 70,000 on top of it and not provide any kind of relief for that. So the CCT would be the one that I would prioritize, while I've been on the record as supporting the Purple Line for many years.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
Yes, there again, if you force us to choose, I would have to choose the CCT, the Carter City Transit Way. I too support the Purple Line. But I think in addition to what others have said, and I agree with much of what has already been said, that we, once you get past Shady Grove Road, we don't have mass transit other than the Mark train, and I think the CCT would be able to give us a mass transit beyond Shady Grove Road, so that those, so that the folks in upper Montgomery County also will have an access to that mass transit, as well as it certainly deals directly with job creation. Part of the Johns Hopkins master plan only allows them to go forward in parts only if the CCT is built. So for those reasons, I would support the CCT if I had to choose one.
Okay, well, let's stay with the topic of transportation. This is a full question, not a follow-up, so, full minute again. Mr. Kassim, you're going to be first up here. There are lots of transportation projects that need funding in Montgomery County. What specific steps would you take in Annapolis? You're not a state delegate, you're not running for state senator or state delegate, but you're going to be a lobbyist for Montgomery County as county council members.
Sure.
And in the county to get funding for this. Question also to, we'd like you to answer here, is would you support Montgomery County obtaining the authority to raise our own gasoline tax?
Well, let me answer the first one, the second one first. No, I wouldn't. I think what that does is it hampers our, if we're the only ones having a higher gasoline tax than the rest of the state, it kind of puts us in a disadvantage. Now, in terms of getting funding, state funding from Annapolis, you know, when you're an elected official at all levels, there's a level of cooperation that must exist, and I would be a cheerleader for Montgomery County, I would be an advocate for Montgomery County, but primarily for District Three, because we do need transportation funding, we do need sort of to relieve some of that congestion, particularly down county as well. So relieving transportation congestion down county also will help the up-county flow. So to answer both questions in short again, I would not authorize in Montgomery County to raise our own gas tax on our own.
Mr. Moore?
I think we go to Annapolis on projects like that, we need to show other folks in other parts of the state why this project will benefit them, not so much why it benefits us. And if we can show them that the growth that these projects would bring in Montgomery County would raise state revenues enough, that's one way to get these projects built. The delegation has had limited success doing that so far. We would like to see more of that. In terms of raising a gas tax, yeah, I absolutely think that Montgomery County should have as many tools in its toolbox as possible to increase the quality of life here in Montgomery County. If we want to step down the property tax rates and increase the gas tax, or if we want to change other fees, that is absolutely the flexibility that we ought to have. The more flexibility a local government has to raise revenues, the more it can respond to current conditions, and the more it can get the things done that it needs to do for the people of the county.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Spiegel?
I have--
I'm sorry, Mr. Katz, I'm sorry, Mr. Katz.
Okay.
I apologize.
As far as, as far as helping Montgomery County in Annapolis, I, as the president, as a past president of the Maryland Municipal League, I always tell people, I have friends and throughout the state of Maryland, I, I've had direct discussions with many, they, I've let them understand that Montgomery County does have great needs, and in fact, I've shown many of my good friends those great needs as well. Some of them have actually gone on to be senators and delegates. I would certainly bring that type of a friendship, as well as the ability to explain to them and show them all of the, all of the problems that exist. As far as the gas tax, you know, that's a real good question. In one breath, I'd like to say that, you know, government should have, the Montgomery County government should have all the flexibility that it takes in order to do this. But in the other breath, I believe that we should, that we should be very, very concerned because if we raise our gas tax here, that that means the state would not give us as much assistance perhaps as they should for the state highway projects and other projects that we, that we need. So I would have to say, as far as the gas tax, I would say no for that at this time.
Now, Mr. Spiegel, thank you.
Thank you. It's not enough to go to Annapolis, you have to prove that you can be effective in Annapolis. And I'm proud of the fact that one of the things I've done as a city council member is I've led the charge to bring home funding from the state for important transportation projects. In fact, just this past year, we managed to obtain $125 million in funding for a critical transportation project, the Watkins Mill Interchange. And we got the state to fully fund that project. We originally thought we were going to have to chip in, but because of our effective advocacy, the state is covering the full cost, which is going to benefit the residents of District 3. Now, I'm not the only one who was involved in lobbying for that project, but I took a leading role and I worked hard with our legislators in Annapolis, leveraging my relationships with them to make that project happen. And I'll do that again with other projects in our district. As for the gas tax, I don't think at this time it's a wise idea to give Montgomery County its own gas taxing authority. Right now, we have taxing authorities that we can work with.
Mr. Spiegel, you stay on the hot seat here.
Very good.
Next question is this, it deals with nonprofit funding. In difficult financial times, nonprofits often are forced to do more with less as government funding decreases. Should the level of support for nonprofits providing safety net services be higher in more affluent times to compensate for the decreases they face during tough times?
I actually think that tough times are precisely the right times to be increasing funding for nonprofit services. That's exactly what I did as a city council member when we were confronted by the Great Recession in 2009 and 2010. I said, "We need to increase funding for these services because they provide such critical support to people who are struggling at the lower levels of our income." And that includes things like housing, food, healthcare, support for daycare, and many other services that these nonprofits provide as part of a coalition together with government. And so I'll continue to take that approach, that we need to actually increase funding and make sure that those programs are fully funded during the hardest times and not cut back during the hardest times. We cut across the board, many departments during the tough times, as did many other governments up and down the food chain. But the one area where I led the charge to increase funding was nonprofits.
Mr. Katz?
Yes, Ryan likes to say he led the charge. I guess there was a lot of charge leaders on those two topics, as far as the state highway to get their roads built, and as far as the nonprofit funding as well. The increased funding is certainly necessary. It's, even during the worst times, it's probably more necessary than during the good times. It actually stretches the tax dollar. If you can have a nonprofit organization do some of the work and work directly with the public, it's beneficial to each and every one of us. Over the years, in the city of Gaithersburg, we have certainly raised the amount of funding that we have given, not only for, for the areas that Ryan was speaking about, of course, but we also give grants for our schools, for after-school programs, and everything else associated with it. We, and most of our other programs, we always look to see how we can be of a help to all of those people that need assistance. And many times, our gift-giving and other programs truly do make us feel good that all of us are helping each other.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
I agree that the funding has to go up when times are hard. During a recession is absolutely the worst time to cut social services. As municipal municipalities, you know, we don't provide the bulk of the social services in Montgomery County, the county does. But what's important, too, is that you have, you have the kind of government mechanism behind it, and financial systems that allow you to keep a steady course when times are tough, and allow you to do that. We had that in Rockville. We managed to make it through the recession and not do drastic cuts. We didn't cut staff, and we didn't raise taxes. In Gaithersburg, they raised taxes, property taxes, 23.6% in the middle of the recession, absolutely the worst time to do it. It doesn't so matter, matter so much what the, what the levels are, it's what you do with them, and you don't increase them during a recession. In Rockville, we didn't raise them, in Gaithersburg, they did.
Mr. Kassim?
Well, I've been a consultant and an executive director for various nonprofits last four years. And nonprofits perform a Herculean job in assisting folks that are in need. So we're talking faith organizations, we're talking folks that help, food, food banks, such as the Mount of Food Center down in Rock, in Gaithersburg. So nonprofits perform a critical factor in providing services, and I've known that firsthand. I've written the grant applications, I've sat there and worked through budgets, I've seen the work that they do in helping seniors and helping young kids. So we need to actually streamline the process in funding, we need to do microfunding for some of these nonprofit programs. We have seniors across the county that are trapped at home, there are organizations that provide transportation for these seniors. So I'd be a champion for nonprofits on the county council, not just increasing the gross dollar that they get, but trying to improve the process in terms of getting them microgrants and microloans so they can provide programs and assistance at the remote level.
All right. Let's turn now to the, sort of the 800-pound gorilla in the budget for the county council, and that's the school board and the school funding. I believe, Mr. Moore, you're up first for this question, and that's this. More than 50% of the county budget goes to Montgomery County Public Schools. What are your thoughts about the relationship between the council and the Board of Education?
You know, as I said before, the county council doesn't control the nitty-gritty of what goes on in schools, the Board of Education does. But there is something very important that the county council can do to really improve the way the schools are administered in our county. For the half of the budget that the county council and the county executive control, there are about 40 people doing oversight on those departments in the county executive. For the school boards, their oversight over the superintendent and the superintendent staff, zero. I think that is the source of a lot of the problems that we're seeing, that we don't have effective oversight by the governing body of our school system. On the county council, what I would make a move to do is give them some oversight, whether it's an IG's department or something like the Office of Legislative Oversight that the county council has. That's what we need, to have, allow the school boards to really govern what's going on with the, with the rest of the school system. We don't have that now.
Mr. Kassim?
Well, MCPS, I'm a bit partial. I came here as an immigrant, English is my third language, so, thank you, teachers. I remember ESOL, in ESOL class, learning Shakespeare. So I think there is something to be said for the product itself, for the public schools that we have. Now, in terms of oversight, I think Tom is right. There has to be a necessary sort of natural friction. It's the way to improve a process. The county council has to, you know, be able to sort of ask tough questions. The county government has to be able to have a process where the school board has to come up and explain budgetary decisions. But at the end of the day, what we want to have is a better school system, because that parent that has a kid that's failing doesn't really, doesn't really think the county schools are so great. So we need to be able, you know, the issue of truancy, the issue of this performance gap, at the end of the day, dollars in the county budget mean services. And the better, the more efficient we are in managing that, the better oversight that we can provide for that, we all win, because better schools mean a better community.
Thank you. Mr. Spiegel?
Well, as an attorney who's conducted a lot of internal investigations over the course of my career, I believe very much in the importance of oversight. But I also think that, as I said earlier, a county council member needs to be an advocate, ambassador, and needs to be a consensus builder. I think there can be improvements in the collaboration and consensus as council members work together with members of the Board of Education. I think there is room for improvement, and I would pursue that by building those relationships, talking with those folks more often on the Board of Education, respecting their role as elected officials who oversee the system. I'm proud of our school system, but it faces a lot of important challenges over the coming years, and we need to work together, not just be at each other's throats.
Mr. Katz?
And I too, first of all, I too am a product of Montgomery County Public Schools, and as was my mother, as were my children. But, and so obviously, we're, Montgomery County Public Schools are very important to us. I believe, right now, their percentage of the budget is about 58% and growing, as far as the amount of money that the county budget is, goes to the Montgomery County Public Schools. And yes, they are a separate entity. But there again, I also believe there needs to be that continuing dialogue. I, too, have heard suggestions about an inspector general and how that would work. But I also believe that we need to make certain that the other departments of Montgomery County, the, the police department and all the other departments in Montgomery County work effectively with the Montgomery County Public Schools so that we can be efficient and effective with that as well.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna, starting to run out of time, I'd like to have this be a 45-second response, please, timekeeper, if you don't mind. Returning to unions, the role of unions. Mr. Kassim, you're first up here. The Washington Post often writes editorials about Montgomery County and its unions that imply that unions control the county. How would you respond to these editorials about how unions work in Montgomery County?
Well, I think, again, I like to use the term "natural friction." There has to be a natural friction, I mean, between labor and management, and that's just the way it is. You know, labor has brought us the 40-hour work week, they've brought us the benefits that we have. So you can't be overly tough-handed in that sense. But I think in Montgomery County, I think the, what happens is a lot of voters are disconnected from the process itself. And a lot of it is perception, but some of it has some real weight to it. We need to have a more open political process in terms of the election process, but I think the unions are doing what they're supposed to be doing for their members, and there has to be a way to sort of split the difference, and to make sure that, A, the voters have a clear and fair shot at looking at all the candidates, and candidates feel that the process is open to them, while on the other hand--
Okay. Sorry, my time's short. Mr. Katz, again, 45 seconds, please.
Thank you. My, I'm very pro-employee. I've often said that the, that the employees are the people that do the work that the, the public sees on a daily basis, and that we need to, to pay them as, as, as good a salary as we possibly can. My wife and daughter are both members of unions in Montgomery County. But I also believe that the current District 3 representative, Phil Andrews, is, is an independent voice for Montgomery County, and I believe that I would be the same. I think that you need to have both people, you need to have the unions and you need to have the good discussions, but it's also important that someone can be very independent while they're looking at all the contracts and negotiations.
Mr. Moore?
You have, you need somebody who's able to walk the walk as well as talk the talk. In Rockville, we have unions, we work very well with them, and we do negotiations and we keep the public's interest in mind foremost, and we manage that just fine. Gaithersburg has kept unions out of the city government. That is, that's their decision, that's what they've done, but it doesn't reflect what's going on in Montgomery County. And I think my experience in working with the unions in Rockville would be much more useful in dealing with the unions that we'll find in Montgomery County. I support unions. The reason I went, was able to go to college is because my mother used her leave bank when she was a Montgomery County public school teacher, was sick for a year. But they are something that you need to be careful in working with and have some experience working with. I have that experience.
Mr. Spiegel?
Well, I'm proud to be, I believe, the only candidate in this race who's supported by labor organizations. I believe that there's an important role for labor organizations to play in our community, and they should continue to play that. That is the point of unions, to allow folks to gather thousands of voices together and have a voice in the political process. Now, does that mean we give unions absolutely everything that they ask for? I've said publicly, I'm not going to agree with every labor organization on every point, but I do think we need to have open dialogue, we need to make sure that we're attracting and retaining good employees, that we're taking good care of those employees, because they are, many of them are residents, and we need to make sure that they can live a good quality of life as they serve the people of our community.
Okay, I think this may be the final question. Let me throw this out to you, and I think, Mr. Spiegel, you've got this. We've got a little bit more time, so a minute each is fine for here. Question is about diversity. We are one of the most diverse political entities in the, in the country, if not the world, Montgomery County. How should county government respond to the economic and social needs of our increasingly diverse population?
I'm proud to have a good record on this. I think it's all about outreach, and you have to walk the walk if you're going to talk the talk on diversity. Again, it's not just about waiting and being reactive for someone to come along and propose an idea. It's about going out into the community, pounding the pavement, and getting to know the folks in all of our different diverse communities, and I've done that. And that's why I've earned the support of CASA in action, that's why I've earned the support of the Hispanic Democratic Club of Montgomery County, working very closely with communities to make sure that we can address their needs in affordable housing, in financial literacy, in multiple languages, in dealing with the achievement gap in our school system, and providing support for ESOL classes. These are things that I have done and will continue to do as a county council member.
Mr. Kassim?
Well, I mean, diversity is indicative of the trend that we are here in Montgomery County. We are absolutely blessed to have such a diverse community. I was in the Marine Corps, and I was deployed overseas and sort of, not even in Maryland, not even in the eastern seaboard, North Atlantic, but I decided to come back here and raise my family here, because this is a very, very special community. But we are going to betray that diversity, we are going to betray what it means for us as a strength in our community if we are not careful and not paying attention to the needs of these communities. I think, you know, when we're talking, we haven't discussed much in terms of the transportation needs, truancy, we haven't discussed the, this persistent education gap, we have not discussed many things that pertain to folks in the lower sector of our economy. And these are issues that will bear themselves true in the next 10 years if we're not careful. So I think diversity is our strength, and in a county council, we need somebody who can appreciate that of what the issues that have come, especially for young families with young kids.
Thank you. Mr. Katz?
Diversity, obviously, is a, is a very important topic. The city of Gaithersburg is an example, is a very diverse community. One of the first committees that I ever worked on in the city of Gaithersburg was the multicultural committee, and it was probably the, the committee that taught me the most. And I'm very pleased and proud of the fact that we continue that committee today, many, many years later. We go to many of their events and have many celebrations with them so that we can all enjoy each other's cultures and, and, and know each other. I, I am proud of the fact that I've been endorsed by the Coalition of Asian Pacific Americans, I have been endorsed by the Democratic Club, the African-American Democratic Club of Montgomery County. I'm someone that's in the community and have friends of every background and have grown up with them, and to this day, some of my good friends from elementary school and I have, have good discussions so that we can make certain that everyone feels comfortable living in Montgomery County.
Okay. Mr. Moore, you have the final say, I believe, in the final question.
All right, thank you. I think it's a matter of creating and seizing opportunities. And I'll tell you what I've done in Rockville. My top legislative priority this year is to move our elections to the presidential year. We're getting low turnout right now in Rockville, and it tends to be fairly monochromatic. We, I looked at the problem and said, "Okay, what's the best way to get a more diverse and representative electorate in Rockville?" And the way to do that is to put our ballot in front of the 70% of voters who are voting during the presidential election. It is, it is a big move, it is a very gutsy move for, must be making in Rockville. I've spent a lot of political capital on it, but I'm not afraid to do that, because I think making our representation more diverse, making our electorate more diverse is absolutely the best way to bring people into the life of the community so we can serve all the needs of all the people in our community.
Well, gentlemen, I, that comes to, or brings to a close the questions, I want to tell you, I'm, I'm very impressed by the choice that District 3 has in front of us, in front of them. And what I'd like to do now is to turn to your closing statements. Again, each of you gets two minutes by random draw. Mr. Spiegel, you are up first.
Thank you. Thank you, Don, and thanks again to the League of Women Voters and to Montgomery Community Media for organizing this forum. It's, it is a pleasure to run in a race where you've got a number of good, qualified people, all of whom are passionate about their service, and we can be respectful, and that's not always the case at the federal level when you look at congressional elections, or when you, even when you look at state and county elections sometimes. So we're very privileged. But sometimes that makes it a difficult choice for the voter, who has to look at all the But sometimes that makes it a difficult choice for the voter, who has to look at all the candidates and figure out, "How do I distinguish between these people?" Well, aside from having a broad coalition of support and endorsements from community leaders and organizations and elected officials, here's what I want you to take away, if you're watching this debate, from the difference between me and the other candidates. Again, they're all good people, and they all have their strengths. Some folks are really good at coming up with creative, innovative, progressive policies, and trying to pursue those policies, but are not necessarily good at building consensus and building relationship to get those policies implemented. Other folks are really good at building relationships, but they're not necessarily the best at coming up with the creative and innovative solutions to make things happen. What I bring to the table is the ability to do both. I have a combination of skill sets, which I think will allow me to continue to build and maintain good relationships with folks across the board, not only inside the county council, but throughout the community and with other elected officials, and also the ability to come up with progressive, creative policy ideas that actually help our community and advance the ball to keep Montgomery County the best place to live, work, raise a family, and retire. And I will do that as a county council member. Again, my name is Ryan Spiegel, visit my website at www.rionspiegel.com, follow us on Facebook and Twitter, and please do come out and cast your vote for Ryan Spiegel on June 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Mr. Moore?
The third district is fortunate that it has four good progressives, four good Democrats running for this job. Any one of us would do a good job. But here's why I'm best suited for this job. I've knocked on thousands of doors in this district, and I've listened to what people have said, what their concerns are. They're concerned about education, and jobs, and growth, and traffic. Montgomery County has some tough decisions ahead of it on these issues. These decisions are going to require real leadership, the kind of leadership I have brought to Rockville. My biggest accomplishments as a Rockville City Council member were not by consensus, and they weren't unanimous, and they weren't easy. But I'm not afraid to take on tough issues. When a Florida developer threatened to buy up Rockville's fireside park apartments and throw its 236 families out of their homes, I built the coalition that saved those families. When others worked behind the scenes to weaken Maryland's ethics laws, I built a statewide coalition of elected officials from cities and towns all over Maryland to fight it. Mayors and council members from all over joined me, from places like Kensington, and Bladensburg, and Ocean City, and Frederick, and Washington Grove. I am disappointed that my opponents in Gaithersburg were on the other side of that fight. They fought to weaken our ethics standards. I believe that we need to be, as elected officials, need to be more accountable, not less. My ability to take on tough issues and build coalitions to get real results has served Rockville well, and it's what I'll do for you on your Montgomery County Council, if you send me there. I do ask for your vote. My name is Tom Moore, I serve on the Rockville City Council now, and I seek to represent you on your Montgomery County Council. Please vote for me on June 24th. My website is moreforcouncil.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Katz?
Thank you, and there again, we do thank the host and Don for being here, for moderating today's discussions. I would like to bring the same level of service that only a mayor brings to a community, and that's that you look over, that you make certain that everyone is, that problems get solved. I'm someone that gives out my phone number, I give out my cellphone number all the time, and I always joke that, much to my wife's happiness, it's on 24/7. If someone has a problem, I want them to call me. I'm also someone that believes that there is no "I" in government. I'm not concerned about getting a headline, I'm not concerned about saying that I did certain things, even though I did them, I'm concerned about the bottom line. I'm somebody that's done everything that a county council member would need to do, I'm someone that's dealt with planning. I was involved with Kentlands in Gaithersburg, and writing the zone for the mixed-use zone, and for Rio, and for Crown Farm. We were very proud yesterday that Gaithersburg was named one of the, I think, the top eight cities of growth, cities in America. And when we did our growth, we've done them, keeping everyone in mind. We've had charrettes, where people will come and everyone from all sides of the issue sit down, and so that we can plan the developments that we're proposing, that everyone feels comfortable, and that we're getting the services that they want. I'm someone that says many times that I've had many heroes in my life, and one of my heroes has been Harry Truman. And Harry Truman, like I, was the master of his Masonic Lodge, although Harry Truman went on to become the Grand Master of the Masons, I did not. Harry Truman was a small retailer that did fine in politics. And Harry Truman had a philosophy that you can solve almost anything if you don't care who gets the credit, and that's me. Please vote for Sidney Katz on June 24th, or before, if you're early voting, for the county council, District 3.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Mr. Kasim?
I'd like to also echo what has been said in terms of thanking the League for putting this together, Don, well done, under the hot lights, and for Montgomery County media for putting this all together. I think this is a very noble cause in letting the voters see the different candidates. Before I sort of do a close, I want to sort of take a moment. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, I've said that a few times, and I have been deployed in the 90s, and I am a member of the VFW, and I want to sort of take a moment and thank those that have served. We are recording this on Memorial Day weekend, and some of my brethren are actually overseas now, so my hat's off to them and anyone who signs up to serve our community and our country. Like most of you that are watching this, I have not served in public office. And then like most of you, that should not and does not disqualify me from running for office, because this is our community. And we need to be careful in a process where sort of a political machinery or insiders decide who our elected officials are. The elections belong to the voters. I'm an immigrant, and I get nostalgic at the process of the concept of actually voting, and citizens being elected to office. So you are, as a voter, you are the board members. This is a sort of a company, you are the board members, you are the owners, and exercise your ownership, exercise your power of the vote. June 24th, my name is Guleid Kasim, and I need your vote, because together we can make a more compelling community and a more active and involved county council member and community. So I thank you for your time. Again, my name is Guleid Kasim. June 24th is around the corner, and I need your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Kasim, Mr. Katz, Mr. Moore, Mr. Spiegel, thank you all very much, and thank all of you for joining us today. Again, I want to thank the candidates for their participation. This forum is just one of the programs that Montgomery Community Media is sponsoring with the League of Women Voters of Montgomery County, to prepare residents of our county for the upcoming primary election. Go to mymcmedia.org to see the schedule of showings for this debate, or watch these offerings being streamed live. You can go watch them on YouTube, in fact. I want to remind you that this primary this year will occur on Tuesday, June 24th. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. You may also vote early, starting on Thursday, June 12th, at sites around the county. The Board of Election website lists each of these locations. Ladies and gentlemen, voting is a great privilege in this country and in this county. Please use that privilege wisely and vote. Goodbye for now.